Okay, everyone, welcome to the January fifteenth caucus and work session at Albany Common Council. Yes? Okay.
Adams, Anani, Ballerin, Clark, Conzie, Pharaoh, Lynn, Frederick.
Here.
Holly.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Keegan.
Here.
Kimbrough.
Here.
Love. Robinson. Zamer.
Here.
Eight present, seven absent.
Okay, don't have a whole lot on the, uh...
Uh, staff present, you have, um, Brian Jimenez, Legislative Director, Alyssa Camaro, Julia Hollis, Annalise, Nika Jackson, um, City Park, Lisa, um, Lisa's Counsel, and Jeff. Um, that can be separated from the council. Thank you.
Ooh, some elevator. Alright, so, um, jumping into very short, uh, agenda, uh, two minutes for previous meeting. I would be offering the January sixth, twenty twenty-five, twenty minutes. Uh, alright, then, uh, we have no local laws ever taken up. Actually just jump down to resolutions. Resolutions introduced, uh, by me, Resolution two twelve twenty-five R, Resolution, uh, the Common Council approving the student's application for grant funding, uh, from Hudson River Valley Greenway Conservancy Trail Grant Program for Tivoli Preserve. You have Flomi from Planning here, will you step up? Good information on that?
Do you have it, do you have it seated there?
Yes.
Can you, can you remember?
Um, I can put it on the, I can put it on the lap, on the bulletin. And then use mine, I, and then I can just talk through it.
Well, if you, you have a printed copy, you could have that, just copy your first one. So you can stand by a copy of that. But in the meantime, we'll keep moving. Just even.
I just had one question for you about this project, and that is related to, is, is the funding that we're pursuing or receiving related to the environmental bond act, or is this a separate part of it?
It's separate.
That's okay.
The funding that comes for the Hudson Valley Greenway grant is the, uh, is the environmental, uh, fund protection, so they receive that funding and they administer it.
Um, I was not clear enough, sorry. So the Hudson Valley Greenway receives, uh, funding through the Environmental, uh, Protection Fund, and that's the one that they administer. And I can, I can give you some background on the Hudson Valley Greenway, um, you know, while the, while we wait on the printout, so it's a state program that was established through the nineteen ninety-one Greenway Act. And as part of the act, they have two subgroups that were established, one of them is the, uh, Conservancy. One of it is the Conservancy.
It's a pretty good picture. I think you have video anybody. Joyce, we can hear you. Yeah, it just, we're in a hurry to talk. Yeah, it was actually my intention to just kind of go really rest of the agenda and then go back to this. Okay, so just continuing, um, and we'll come back to this, uh, this resolution, uh, next resolution, uh, by Mr. Ballerin's, Resolution three twelve twenty-five R, it's Resolution of the Common Council Appointing Deborah Y. Brown to the Public Education Government Access Oversight Board. That'll, that's gonna be a referral to, uh, the PEG Ad hoc Committee for review, discussed. Then next, uh, by Ms. Love, uh, Resolution four twelve twenty-five R, uh, it's a resolution of the Council honoring Roger Maria Markovich for their housing advocacy and legacy. We'll be voting on that. Did you?
Come here.
So, uh, next, uh, Resolution by, uh, by me, so five twelve twenty-five R, it's Resolution of the Common Council Honoring the Life and Legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King. Um, we're usually all co-sponsors on that, so we'll do that again. Then next, uh, is Resolution that was held by Mr. Robinson, Resolution eighty-nine eighty-two twenty-four R, it's Resolution of the Council Reappointing Thomas Mueller as a member of the Commission on Human Rights, it passed the committee, positive, uh, recommendation to reappoint him, um, so we'll be voting on that. And then, uh, also, uh, Resolution ninety-five ninety-one twenty-four R, uh, by, also by Mr. Robinson's, Resolution of the Council Reappointing, uh, Patricia Alexander as a member of the Commission on Human Rights. Similarly, it went through the committee, came out positively, and we'll be reappointing her. They weren't? Yeah, we us- yeah, we usually, we could, can we get them to pop into the caucus before me? Yeah, that's. Cause it was a reappoint. Yeah, ask them how it's been, and what they like and don't like, and.
Um, the ones that was discussed at the people, this is, um, the one that was discussed, um, the ones that was back in the, you know, discuss the process of getting those vacancies.
The only thing that was discussed at that meeting was the, uh, reappointment of those two, and being that they were s- um, so active in the community, um, they both had a reason for not being there, um, we went ahead and, um, passed it out of committee.
Um, there is a provision in the rules that you have any, any appointment of the Council to the Board of Commission and reappointing after a year before, so why do you have to waive that provision? Like, the other issue is, are those two Council vacancies, uh, need to be filled?
So, um, I believe the understanding that we operated under is that they had to be present when it went to the floor for a vote, um, as far as the committee.
So they're g- they're gonna be here on, um, next Thursday?
Uh, I would make sure that they were not, we understand, yeah, their expectation.
Right, cause the, the thing is, they either, at lea- at the very least, the committee, um, we've been having, and when they didn't make the committee, they popped into the meeting before it got passed, so, so, yeah.
I believe that's what the understanding going forward was, that they would come to the council.
Yep, so we'll do that, we gotta get them here on, uh, on Thursday. And then also, the larger discussion of you, you saying, there, there are vacancies, we gotta figure out how we're gonna, um, fill those, I mean, it, we've posted them.
We have, we actually keep, um, we keep the, um, posting up, so we constantly filter any applications, so we'll, we'll review what we've received, what we've received down to so far.
Okay, did you, um, did everyone vote?
We keep it open continuously, so there is no strict, no hard deadline.
Okay. So, Drew, now we've, we got, everyone got a copy of the presentation, so we'll go back to training.
Sorry, Kelly, while we're discussing resolutions, and this will actually tie into what Flomi's about to talk about, but may have an M.C. forthcoming, um, regarding naming the South End Connector, um, a greenway under the Hudson River Greenway Program, again, trying to speak to that, but I guess there is a, a timeline for both that and the, um, uh, Tivoli Park, uh, Greenway Resolution as well, with both related to obtaining grant funding for those prospective projects, um, so. I guess we'll be looking for passes to, 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 and the forthcoming M.C.
So, can you talk about what you were gonna talk about, but then also, do you have anything, uh, what you, we are not, we, we.
Kelly, can I just interject real quick before we move to that? Um, I have confirmation from Thomas Buller that he can attend Thursday evening, so he'll be at least in presence, I know that people will check in on the other one as well.
Thank you. Okay, good.
Um, I think we have the docket in front of you, the first slide, um, so I just wanna walk through the Tivoli Preserve, um, request first. So, we have a project which is currently underway, it's for, it's for Tivoli Preserve enhancements, it's an ongoing project based off of the twenty fourteen Visioning Master Plan, and we've been consistently working towards it, and we get grant funding through the Department of Environmental Conservation for it. Um, we've done hundred percent design documents for it, and we have currently advertised that project to contractors, but our estimate is that it's, projects are usually coming in bidding higher than usual, so we're seeking additional funding through the Hudson Valley Greenway, uh, Trails Program. Uh, so this is, in applying for that program, we require authorization from the Common Council to be able to apply for this grant, so this essentially sort of walking you through what, uh, the Hudson River Valley Greenway is. So that's the first slide, which talks about what the program is and where it's rooted in, so the Hudson, uh, River Valley Grant Act of nineteen ninety-one helped establish this state program, and it's, uh, state-sponsored and has two different, uh, arms that sort of oversees the processes. We are applying for the Greenway Conservancy, whose primary goal is creating regional trail networks and encouraging trail stewardship through local nonprofits, so we've been partnering with the Friends of Tivoli very closely throughout this entire process. In fact, the priorities for this project was established with support from the Friends of Tivoli, they did the outreach and the survey of the needs assessment, and so that's how we highlighted the top three projects, which were also rooted in the Visioning Plan. So the project is going to focus on ADA accessible trail loop, um, a fishing dock and signage, and also trail and trailhead enhancements, and I'll hook you through that later. But coming back to the Greenway Conservancy Program and answering, answering Councilmember Keegan's question, this receives, uh, funding through the Environmental Protection Fund, and there is a Board of Directors, which comprises of state representatives as well as county representatives that vote on the projects that get designated, as well as get, uh, funding through the grant. Um, then coming specifically to the application that we are hoping to apply for, that's the next slide, uh, we're requesting funding for the trail construction, which is up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, the grant has, um, match requirement, it's a dollar-for-dollar match, fortunately, we had bonded, um, approximately one point five billion for Tivoli Preserve enhancements, this was through the twenty twenty-four budget cycle, so we have that funding to show as a match for this project. One point four million of, of that bonded amount is received through the Department of Environmental Conservation, it's hundred percent reimbursable, and there's no match requirement through it, and we receive a two hundred fifty thousand dollar annual allocation for this. We've not received the allocation for this year, but that'll come through in spring. Uh, the following slide sort of just walk you through the project itself, but before I, uh, you know, dive into the project, I wanted to ask if there are any other questions that you had about the grant, uh, program itself, that I can, uh, talk on?
Any questions about the program itself?
So, uh, the Tivoli, the next few slides walk you through the Tivoli Preserve Enhancement Project, so if you see, it shows you the location of Tivoli Preserve, it's, uh, eighty acre green space located in the West Hill neighborhood. It's really a beautiful preserve, which has lakes and the Petron Creek Daylight Project. If you ever wanted to walk through, the Friends of Tivoli does a walkthrough, and I'm always happy to join and show you around, it's, it's really a beautiful gem, and what we've been struggling with is access and signage and ADA accessibility, because there is a trail that exists within the preserve, it's not completely ADA accessible, and it doesn't connect all access points of, you know, with the West Hill community. So, you know, the top three items that we identified with support through the Friends of Tivoli was the ADA accessible trail loop, signage, and fishing access. And so the next slide, um, and it's a lot of, hello, yeah, but if you can see the blue dotted line, that shows you the entire trail network that we will be building through this project. And the black circles, the black circles show you all of the trailheads that we will be creating as part of this project. So there is a major trailhead, which is towards the extreme right side, which, uh, is on North Manning, close to Kip School and the Livingston School Apartments, that's a major trailhead, which will have more amenities, and the other two, um, black circles, one is where the Friends of Tivoli Farm is currently located, so very close to that location, and the other one is on Quail Street, across from the West Hill Community Center. So the next, uh, page shows you the plans that we have for the major trailhead, it includes amenities such as a multi-use trail, uh, we had proposal for an outdoor seating, can be used as an outdoor classroom and picnic area, and we were hoping to keep it, not have a pavilion, but to retain some of the planting and maintain the preserve, uh, environment. Um, we also had in the plan a playground, but we've, we've sort of had some, you know, discussions with maintenance that we may have to pivot and look at more of a passive use, uh, there are developments immediately in proximity, that's the wind development, they're looking to expand the Livingston Apartment Complex, and they've offered to work with us on some of the maintenance aspects of it. And similarly with Kip School, they are expand, they've recently procured five ninety-six Manning, and are hoping to convert that into a parking lot to improve the circulation that they currently have for the school, and they will be dedicating a portion of that parking lot for the preserve. So these are all plans in the works, so that's what, what's shown in this slide. The next slide shows you the location for the minor trailhead on Quail Street. So you have, uh, the Quail Street, um, sort of shown over there, you have Tivoli Apartments on one side and Hope House on the other side. This is the city's right of way where we would be, where we'll be constructing the trailhead, what we're doing is re- regaining some of that green space, which is asphalt, which is, it's currently an area which is used to dump a lot of mattresses and tires, so we will be closing off that access as a service gate, and we'll be building out that sidewalk, because the sidewalk drops, uh, as you stop at the Tivoli, you know, apartment, so we'll be connecting that sidewalk onto the trail and building that out, so it'll be a minor trailhead, and it's directly across from the West Hill Community Center, so it'll be a really good tie-in for the community. And the next slide shows you the last, uh, trailhead that we're proposing. This was, um, this was, we got lucky with this one, it's, um, so some, the trees that you see in, you know, the, there's a location that's highlighted with an arrow, and there's a lot of foliage there, we had to clear that foliage through the Department of, you know, Department General Services had to go in and clear that foliage because they, uh, were infected, and so it cleared up all of that space. And we are proposing to create that connection to the Tivoli, uh, Preserve Trailhead by building out a sidewalk on Wilkins Avenue and connecting it, uh, over onto the larger trail network, so those are the three trailhead options. Those, that's, uh, that's largely what they're proposing to do for the Tivoli Preserve Enhancement, it has the three trailheads, the ADA trail loop and fishing dock, which I haven't shown here, because it would be like a very mystical location pointed, but it's on the lakefront, and it's, uh, it'll be, uh, all year round floating dock with solar bubblers, so. And in order for us to apply for this grant, we need to be able to close out the South End Connector Trail Grant, because we use the Hudson Valley Greenway funding for the South End Connector Phase Two improvements, uh, it was seventy-five thousand dollars. We finished all the paperwork, but they do need a designation of the trail as a greenway, that those are part of the terms and conditions of having received that grant application. So in order for us to apply, um, and the deadline for this grant, for the Tivoli Preserve Grant is January thirty-first, we need to be able to designate, um, the South End Connector as a Greenway Trail prior to be able to submitting that application. So, which is why we have two requests for tonight, one is authorization of the application for the, uh, you know, to be able to apply for the Hudson Valley Greenway for the Tivoli Preserve, and the second one is designating the South End Connector Trail as a Greenway Trail.
So, any, uh, oh, yeah, is there gonna be like restrooms as part of this trail?
Restrooms are not designed for, at least for this phase, because we were working with a budget of one point five to start with, but then we've got additional fundings to the New York page, because we're doing the multi, the multi-use park, so we are up a little bit, but not enough to cover.
No, you mentioned the West Hills Community Center, that's gonna be built, right?
Correct.
Okay, so would people be able to go in there, you think, if they needed to use?
Yes.
Okay. And then my other question was, with the lake, is I know Petron Creek had a lot of radioactive, is the fish, cause you were talking about the fishing dock, is that fish okay to eat?
So D E C monitors, uh, the fish, and in, in fact, on the D E C website, they have listed Tivoli Lake as one of the fishing locations, which is why we were pushing to sort of get, uh, fishing, a safe fishing dock in place, because I believe it's used a lot, and it's just not established as yet, so people, you know, there is just a risk. So we want an established dock where people can safely go, and then we can establish those boundaries, but it is monitored by D E C.
Great, I, I was concerned about that, but it sounds like a great project, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, and so, Mr. Williams, you're gonna get together the, the?
Yeah, I'll, I'll put that M.C. together and hopefully get that shopped around by end of the week.
Okay.
And, uh, Mr. Johnson, I think the, the M.C. would be, it's for the South End Connector, which I think is at your award, so if you're willing to sponsor that, I can put your name on it and get it sent out.
Okay, and then just lastly, we're working on, Zamer? Yes, Black Hist- did everyone get their nominees in for Black History Month? If not, the clock is ticking, it usually goes down to the wire, anyways, uh, unfortunately, they usually manage to, to work it out, uh, there's that, so we need those. But then also, uh, we're about to receive the State of the City from the mayor, and there's, you know, we're in discussions about doing it up on the SUNY campus, or, um, and, excuse me, U-Ten, U-Ten. And, um, so we're wo- we're working through the logistics of that, um, and we'll, we'll make a decision in the next couple of days. The thing is, the mayor wants to do it and provide us the presentation up there, but that, it's gonna cause us to take some steps to, to make it work, um, and there may, may be some costs associated with it, so we're, we're, we're trying to work through that, so, but, yeah. Ms. Frederick? Twenty, twenty-nine? Yeah, Ms. Frederick?
Um, a few questions, uh, based on the state of the state yesterday, do, are we interested in M.C.A. potentially resolutions, uh, in support or, or thinking, right, uh, for the four hundred million, uh, is expected to go towards downtown Albany, and the hundred fifty million expected for the, uh, State Museum? Do we wanna support, like, any rel- resolutions for that?
I mean, we could, yeah.
Say it again? I'm sure we do, but I think, uh, an initial, you know, support of those funds coming into our city is a good statement to make, with a request for, you know, more and being involved in the process, obviously. Okay.
So we.
Thanks.
Just kidding.
I, I may be able to, to dig up some more fleshed out details about what's going down at C E C, there's actually two components to that funding, just so everybody understands, so one of the primary functions of that location is the archives, that means that every single solitary piece of paper that the state has to hold on to for whatever purposes, whether it's historical preservation, or they're required to as a matter of record keeping, goes through there, and they don't, you know, those archives haven't been updated, I think, since the, the Plaza was built, so it's not a sufficient facility. So one of the, the major issues is that the state allocated resources for them to rebuild the archives, and they never made really any significant moves towards rebuilding the archives, so our preservation areas are failing. So our preservation areas are failing, and we're losing massive things that they need to hold on to for the purposes of preservation. So I don't, I don't know that the entire hundred and whatever million is specifically just for the museum. And then there's the whole actual reconstruction project of the museum itself. Um, I happen to be the union rep for most of the workers down there, um, so I've been very involved in a lot of the discussions about what is actually happening in terms of funding. Um, and I would also look, perhaps look at, um, public employees' federation legislative agenda, because whatever, whatever good things are happening is probably going to be contained within their budget memo. The other big thing that needs to happen down there is the, um, there's a real estate transaction fee that supports the museum that hasn't been increased in decades. And they have no other revenue sources, so that's like the other big to do. Um, is actually getting the sustainable funding in place for them to be able to keep up with, um, salaries and necessary staffing, so on and so forth.
Thank you for that, I was gonna ask, uh, staff to kinda, if you guys could get as much information on, on that as, as you, as you can. We probably should try to put something together, so if, if, uh, Mr. Jimenez, you could get together with Jake and.
I'm happy to support that, and I don't know, Councilmember Keegan, if, um, you can share the information as well, but I think we should put out an initial statement as a council to make sure that, you know, we show our support for the anticipated investment in our downtown.
Yeah, yeah, even as a, a general statement, I think that we, yeah, we'll work on that. Right, and so when I said, and so when I said logistics, we're working on either doing the caucus up there in the, in the building there. But again, the, the cost that I was talking about is, uh, there's a cost for us to, to do the, uh, live stream, like, I mean, like, like two thousand dollars for us to do the live stream. I mean, the mayor's got, they, they're gonna do what apparently what they wanna do or whatever, but again, that, that State of the City is a presentation to the council. Um, so we're, we're trying to accommodate, but again, it's gonna cost us, which. It was either that, that date or the thirtieth, right? So, but they, but they're, they're, they wanna do the, the one on the caucus night and have us, have caucus and, you know. Thirtieth is enough. Kelly?
I knew about this, cause it's, goes through my department, um, I didn't hear anything about a cost. Do you want me to investigate and see if we can?
No, no, and, and the thing is, the cost is at the university, this is from, uh, contact of mayor, and he's setting it up or whatever, but, um.
The cost is a technology cost, not for the space itself, it's technology.
Yeah, but it's my, it's my department's technology, I'm not seeing any of that yet.
They're, they're supposedly, they're going with an outside vendor to, plus our I T department can support.
Okay. I mean, I, again, the internet and everything there is through my department, so, and I kinda knew about this, but I didn't know if we were gonna be invited, so I'm glad to hear all this, thank you.
Okay, and then also, I wanted to, uh, apparently for Miss Romero's, uh, committees, do I have to do a, something formal for Mr. Conkey or?
Yeah, so, as President Pro Temp, you can assign individuals to committees, I think the simplest way to do it would just be to use your authority to designate him, but that should be officially stated at the meeting.
Right, that's what I.
Yeah, I think that's just like what is the easiest way to do it, assuming that, uh, you've spoken about the committee.
Okay. And then, uh, as far as the legislation, well, we could talk about that stuff offline.
Right, you know, we're, we're happy to discuss, uh, like, the legislation and things more. I, I think as long as, either way, nothing would be happening in, except at a normal meeting of the council, so we will, uh, talk more about this, and then we can tell the full council on Monday's meeting, let's talk this.
Mr. Williams?
Unrelated to all that, uh, given some of the changes in my office lately, uh, we have had some reshuffling of duties. You'll still be seeing me on Wednesdays, um, but for most Mondays going forward, it's actually gonna be Rob, the corp counsel, sitting in this seat, I think. Um, just because, you know, different people taking on some different duties. Um, anything you need council-related, still come to me with that, I'm still the main person for all that, but, you know, probably sitting here smiling at you all from the day of, on Monday, and probably Thursday meetings as well.
Thank you. And congratulations. Mr. Holly?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to bring up to everybody, uh, I'm putting together a resolution honoring the, uh, inductees at Albany High School to the National Honor Society. And I, I would, you know, we'll mail it out once it's written up, I was hoping everybody would co-sponsor, and it'll be for the first meeting in February. It was a hundred and two students that were, uh, inducting to the National Honor Society. And it, I think it's a feel-good type of resolution, so if everybody would like to be a co-sponsor, I appreciate it. No, oh, what I do is we'll send it out electronically to the schools, so they can distribute it to the kids. We might ask the, uh, there's two faculty members that put it together, it might be a nice thing, I can ask to see if they would come down and get a formal, you know, resolution if they could be willing, so I'll work on that in the next couple of weeks, thank you.
All right, anyone has anything else we're adjourned? Okay?